Good evening. Welcome to our interview tonight with Cindy Evans, candidate for county council District Nine. Conducting our interview tonight is Christine Kubat and myself. Before we get to the interview, a little bit about Houli Pack. Houli Pack was birthed from a shared drive to rework our system by seeking Ina-based equity-focused leadership for our Hawaii island community. Now more than ever, we need leaders who are willing to circle back to our roots and instill real change in our community. From Kona to Kau, to Hilo to Havi, the time is now to huli the system. And Cindy, why don't you take a few moments to introduce yourself before we start our interview?
Thank you. Aloha, everyone. And first of all, thanks to Houli Pack for organizing this and giving an opportunity for the community to get to know me. And I've lived in North Kohala, South Kohala region for 23 years. And I served for 16 years as a state representative, representing North and South Kohala, as well as North Kona for 10 years until they changed the district lines. It was a very wonderful experience at the legislature. And over the years, I served as Chair of Public Safety, Chair of Department of Land and Natural Resources, Chair of Economic Development. I also was Majority Floor Leader. So I served on leadership, which is really critical when you have 51 members in the State House to get the work done. So I come with experience working with federal agencies, state agencies, our congressional delegation, and also with the mayors, a little bit with the mayors. I'm hoping that things change in the future and we have more mayors and council interacting with the legislature of the state capital. I think we could do better. So that's a little bit about me.
Thank you, Cindy. Christine?
Well, that's
Take it from here.
That's the perfect lead into my first question, Cindy. And that is, what made you decide to get back into politics?
Well, part of it, I think, was during the pandemic. At home, I was very active in doing house projects on my to-do list, but also doing some classes online, reflecting on who I was, what I want in my life, and then realizing that I really like government service. I love community service. I like to solve the problems. I realized now with the pandemic, coming out of the camp, coming out of the pandemic, there is so much that is on our plate to change. And nothing's going to go back the way it was. So now we're in a new time, a new way of doing things, and government's going to have to change. The community, engagement with the community is at the forefront of what I'm thinking. And knowing what I've done over the years, learning how to build collaboration, consensus, setting priorities, working with the community to hear their voice, representing with administration, working with department heads, working with legislature. I've got those kinds of skill sets and I really, really like doing the work. And I thought, wow, I think I could actually do something for the community and there's so much to be done. So I would really like to serve the community. I really care.
Okay, thank you. And so you are at the state legislature. Now you're hoping to work at the county council level, right?
Yes.
And so how about explaining that part of the decision? Instead of running for state again, you decided to work at the county level?
Well, one of the things I realized for me personally is that I wanted the opportunity to stay on island. When I was a state representative, I was living about six months out of the year in Honolulu. And I decided that this time around, I would love to be very, very connected to my community, where I can be out every single day, talking with people, working on the issues, seeing the issues. It's different when you have to live and be gone so much back and forth and trying to communicate with your constituency. And I just felt at this time in my life, this would be a wonderful way to serve the community and very different than what I did before.
And can you explain a little bit your strategy for collecting and taking campaign contributions? Have you set any personal limits? Is there anything you're doing about that that helps you be more independent as an elected?
An interesting question because, you know, I've watched people over the years raise money and people, many people do it different ways. And some people just get on the phone and say, you have to make 10 cold calls a day. Just get on the phone and start calling and ask, call and ask, and that's just all you do. 10, 10 cold calls and you're lucky, you'll, you'll start getting the money. Other ones say, you know, reach out and ask for endorsements. And so the endorsements at, in Hawaii, the people that give money to candidates, they're kind of known. You know, if you look at campaign contribution lists of any senator, state representative, it's online. You can look and be, you know, over a time, you realize it is the same few hundred probably people that donate to campaigns. And they're usually PACs, they're usually lobbyists, they're usually unions. They're the big companies, Alexander and Baldwin, Castle and Cook, the Cattlemen's Association. I mean, it's like the common, it's the common, you know, you can get those and reach out to them and say, oh, I'd really like to consider me and endorse me. Normally, when they endorse you, they write a check because they know that you have to run a campaign. So what I did for this campaign is I set my budget. And then I started telling people that I was running. And some people just know that you gotta raise money and spend money to, to get your name out in an election. So, you know, people have been very nice. I've gotten checks from people that have known me over the years. I've, so far, I've had a couple of unions who have endorsed me and want to give me money. But those are people that I've known over the years that have known that, you know, I came from a, my father was a plumber and he was a union person. And they understand that I have a union background. And so they have a, there seems to be a, I don't want to say camaraderie, but it's like, they know that I grew up in a union family. So, you know, they seem, we, we can talk the talk of, you know, when you're a union. I don't know how to explain it. I grew up in a union family. Everything was union. They get it. And so they're very, they're very gracious to me. But I didn't actively say, give me money for this campaign. They just knew that I needed money for the campaign. And that's kind of how it came to me so far. And I've gotten two, two endorsements and I'm getting money from two unions. I have not reached out to any of the public sector unions and I wasn't planning on it. I felt like this campaign, I would probably end up funding a good portion of it. And I feel comfortable with that. And I decided I wasn't going to pursue the public funding way of getting your campaign funded, which is available to people, which I think is a really good idea that we have public funding. But I personally have not taken that route of pursuing it because you have to qualify. You know, there's qualifications for it. But, so there it is. I suspect I'm going to be around $20,000 for this campaign. To get my word out. Yeah.
We do have an interest in endorsements. Would you like to share the names of the two unions that endorsed you?
Plumbers and seam fitters and carpenters.
Thank you. All right. So now maybe we'll talk a little bit more about issues. What do you see as the three most pressing issues facing your district?
I think, I think the biggest thing, well, there's so many, but, but let me say, I think there's burden, there's so many burdens that are being, that are influencing our community. For the working poor, for example, they're having a real hard time finding housing in their district. So they have to commute a long distance. For those that may have to bus over and miss a bus, they're sleeping on benches or they're, they're homeless. You could call them homeless, but they're not homeless. But the reality is if they don't catch that bus, where are they going to sleep? So we have some people, unfortunately, working poor in, in the district, that we've got these homeless issues. And a big part of it is workforce, housing, and the ability to, for people to live where they work, that, that's a huge problem. When I talk to the general managers of the hotels, they're saying they're having a hard time getting a workforce. You know, there's a lot of people saying they can't get employees. But when you talk to them and, you know, really get into the conversation about what's the problem with that? It's, again, housing, people being able to live here and afford the housing. And of course, the, the rising cost of living here is making people question, is this where they should live? And so there has been an exit and people moving to the mainland that would fall into that workforce potentially for the, for the hotels. So we're also losing people to the mainland because they can't afford to live here. Such a, such a heavy burden. I think, you know, we've got challenges with our youth coming out of pandemic. I think our youth need to have activities and recreation. I think they need to be engaged with our community and have sports. And, you know, people need to get out and they need to move around. A lot of our parks and recreation in the district that I'd like to represent need a lot of work. The, a lot of deferred maintenance, a lot of operational problems. With example, the pool up in North Kohala not working, lots of issues there. And so I'd like to work a lot on trying to get these parks really updated. And the other thing that's interesting is toilets, sewage is a big issue for this district. There's cesspools along the coast. We need to figure out, I'd love to work with the community to figure out solutions on how to collaborate, work with the mayor and the environmental management, work with the federal government, work with USDA and EPA, start talking about how these solutions can make it workable for the community. They have to get off cesspools. It's really harming our nearshore waters. And people in Puakua right now have issues with not wanting to swim in the water because of the affluent that's going out in the water. And the other thing is, some people have mentioned to me, along our coastline, there's a lot of places that people like to go and, and congregate. But we have problems with our restrooms, not having adequate restrooms. So we have to look at the restrooms, make sure there's good restrooms. We, you know, it's, it's a public health issue. So I think that's a real concern. Infrastructure, when you drive the roads, you know, we've got potholes. We've got some major issues with the road infrastructure falling apart in several areas in this district. And also we have the, this huge problem with traffic intersections and, and bridges that are old. So infrastructure is really high, I think, on the list of how do we get, make sure that the district, which is North and South Kohala, that their projects get on the list of projects and that we really bring attention to them and make sure that over the next two years, this district gets their fair share of road projects because they're really, really needed. People are, obviously agriculture is huge for this district. There are some concerns about water, concerns about permitting, workforce housing for agriculture, for example. Obviously invasive species is a big deal. So I think agriculture has a lot of different dynamics to it, but they're so important to the health of the agricultural community. And we have a lot of people in the community that want to be smaller farm, small farm, not large, small farmers. So we have to look at the land that's available to them and how we do our permitting to allow possibly more smaller farms in a way to do that. I'd love to get in the middle of, of trying to, to solve that one. You know, my, as a legislature, I felt like the community told me what their concerns were. My job was to listen, start working on how to solve it, try to find answers, find answers that were reasonable, were affordable, were practical, that, you know, really found solutions. And over the years, I've learned so much about process and departments and, and how to kind of maneuver the, the government bureaucracy. I'm really, I'd have to say I'm good at it because I've spent so many years doing it. But that's what you need. You got to get the problem, you have to identify it, stay focused, and then start working on the solution.
Yeah, that was pretty thorough. And you did touch on housing. That is definitely an issue that a lot of people bring up, both at the county and state level. And just exploring that a little bit more, I wonder if you could share your assessment of what the root causes of homelessness are? I think you touched on that a little bit, but I think it's often helpful to understand how someone evaluates that part of it, to realize how they might go about addressing the problem.
Well, a couple of things I heard, root causes of, of housing.
Homelessness.
Or homelessness, homeless, root, root causes are, you know, runaways, domestic violence, divorces. There's people that get divorced and maybe the woman, you know, didn't have a job and the husband leaves, goes to the mainland and leaves her here. I know of one case where she became homeless because of that. Kind of left the back, holding the bags, so to speak. I think addiction, I think post-traumatic stress syndrome. People get traumatized and they don't get help and they possibly, you know, they, they, I don't know, they just, they can't deal with things and they, and they leave. And they leave and they, they, they just walk out the door and, you know, a friend of mine, her, his daughter is on the streets of Kona, but she's a paranoid schizophrenic. And she just can't, anybody wants to talk to her, approach her, she thinks they're going to kill her. So she runs and she's been on the streets for like four years. So there, there, there's many things that are homeless. But the one that's more interesting right now is the workforce, the workforce homelessness. We actually have homeless people that are working a job. And so now we've got homeless people and generally, not always, but generally those people have cars. So what they do is they sleep in cars. So my understanding is they've been, and so I won't mention, but they've been in some of these big shopping center parking lots and they've gotten kicked out. But that's where they would, was parking because they had light and they felt safer with the light, you know, being lit, you know, instead of in a neighborhood or, you know, off the road. But they got kicked out there. So it makes me wonder where the, where are they going to park their car and sleep? You know, sometimes they're at the Quai High Boat Harbor or Spencer Park, you know, where they could get in and park their car. But again, you know, people may kick them out because, you know, you're not supposed to loiter or be there illegally, right? So, you know, we have an issue and it's, it's a big issue. And, and I think the next part to your question is, you know, what are we, you know, what are we doing about housing? Well, I can tell you the state legislature, the governor and people have been trying to create these rental housing funds and these programs and rental income tax credits and tax credits for people to build affordable housing. And I think that, that, that the government has put together these kind of programs and shoved this money in there. And then what they're hoping is that someone will come along and actually build them. So I think that the issue has been, what is the barrier to building? Because the money and the financing to actually encourage someone to build them, that's been done. That's actually there. But the question is, what is the barriers? And I think the council and the mayor, because I think it's a local, really local that you can solve this problem, is the council and the mayor have to talk about zoning, permitting, you know, access to restrooms and water, you know, safe places. What is it that we're not doing that we could do? And the other thing that's interesting, for those of us that have lived here long enough, is there's been some pretty successful, how, little small housing, homeless housing programs over the years. For those that knew Quai High Harbor, at the bottom of Quai High Road, there used to be a small, little enclave of these itty-bitty tiny homes. And they, people would go in there that didn't have housing and they would start out there and eventually move somewhere else. And then those got torn down, right? Then there was the O'Uli Self-Help Housing Project that was done many years ago. Great, successful project. But that was a model that worked, working with people, trying to build their own home and making it affordable. And then, you know, we know, another thing that people were talking about with me the other day is think about when the volcano went off and we had the lava flow. American Red Cross and people came in and immediately set up these small areas. We think, though I never went to visit them, I would think there was tents and restrooms and, you know, a common area for food that people could come in and get food. So there was a way to kind of set up this temporary housing. If that's what we need, what would keep us from doing that? It's the land, it's the location. It's, are people going to fight us with not in my backyard syndrome? You know, or we don't want to see it. We don't want it in our community. So that the issue is, is we're going to have to get out, we're going to have to be, I, in my opinion, we're going to have to be very proactive and we can't hide from this. We've got to be open with it and go out and actually talk to each community and say, where in your, in your community could we put up some temporary homeless housing? Not knowing what it might look like. It might be a cluster of containers. It might be a cluster of yurts. It might be a cluster of, of tents. You know, it might be tiny homes, you know, but we'll probably cluster it because then you could have your services, you know, the food and the, you know, make sure the restrooms and, you know, because you have to have sewage treatment, remember? Because we don't do cesspools, you know, and septic tank, you have to like work that out. So, you know, I always, I was talking to, again, this conversation went on for almost two hours on homeless the other night. And the reality is, is, is people can put the money there. They can identify potential programs. But in the end, someone's going to have to manage it and operate it and actually put it together. And who's that going to be? Is it going to be a nonprofit organization? Are you going to hire government and have them run that kind of program? Are you gonna, you know, how are you going to run it? And I think one of the keys to maybe why we're haven't quite moved, what I think more on this topic, I mean, given all the money that the state's given to this, why aren't we solving the problem? I think a big part of it is, you know, somebody's got to operate it, maintain it and be sure it, it functions. You know, you can't, somebody said on Oahu right now, there's 30 homes sitting vacant, homeless shelter. And they haven't put anybody in that, those homes for three months because they're, the person who's going to operate the facility is fighting with the city and county of Honolulu on the money that they're going to get paid to do it. And what the expectation is of how many employees they're going to hire to take and maintain it and how they're going to do landscaping. And do you have the tenants do the landscaping? Well, does that mean who's going to supervise it? I mean, all that kind of detail. And when you operate something like this has to be worked out. And I think that's probably been, probably one of the barriers, is how you're going to operate it after you do it.
You know, a separate issue is affordable housing. And what do you think the county can do to create more affordable housing kind of solutions? Do you think the county can offer? It's really getting, I mean, the, the cost of real estate and housing is just skyrocketing. And it's affecting the workforce as well. So what kind of solutions do you think there might be?
Well, some of them, again, I think what's, what's interesting about this, just, I want to frame this, that there's nine council members and you need five votes to pass anything. And I think when you throw out ideas, which I would love to throw out solutions to a lot of these problems, you still have to get not only five votes, but because of the way the sunshine laws and the way you present your ideas, it might take a while to bring people on board as what you're trying to accomplish. So I want to tell people that I do have several ideas, but I do believe it's not going to be so easy to get those through the council because you have to educate, bring people on board, talk to the community, get buy-in. You know, it's a process, right? But I do want to take a look again at ohannas, you know, allowing people to build ohannas and guest houses on their own property. I would like to look at that again and see if there's anything holding that up. I believe, you know, that it's okay to have really, really small lots like they used to have. If you go up to Havi and Kapa'au and go to the, you know, the, where the sugar plantation, plantations were, they had really small lots and really cute houses, small cute houses and small lots. So, you know, how do we encourage maybe that kind of model? Again, so, you know, things get built small and subdivisions have really small lots. But again, you know, you have to, hopefully the, I'd like to think with technology that, and that we could do a better job with how we're dealing with our building codes. I've been told that the building codes and the, the way the international building code, anyway, there were some laws passed at the state level that's impacting the county, which ends up impacting building codes. And a former state representative pushed really hard to pass this law that said every time the international building code gets updated, the county has X amount of time to embrace the new technology and the new thoughts on building code. And if the county doesn't take action, then they automatically become the new building code. Well, a lot of this building code stuff is very expensive and it adds a lot more money to, so, you know, the council needs to get on that and make sure that, you know, we're not continuing to add more and more building code requirements that keep making the cost of housing go up and up and up, right? Which I, I think is true. The other thing is, you know, I'm a real proponent of tiny homes. And I like tiny homes. I also like these homes that are, that are on wheels. You know, that, that, you know, but of course, they have to be safe. They have to, you know, they have to be like hurricane clips. They have to be, you know, done the right way for hurricane, you know, building them according to certain requirements so, so people live in safe places. But I think there's products out there. And I think that, I love the idea of clusters. There's communities that have struggled with this. Again, this is not a new issue. This, these issues, little communities across the US struggle with these ideas. Well, I mean, with these problems of affordability. And some communities have done what they call cluster housing, which I kind of like the idea of clusters. But that reminds me of, when I think of, you know, the plantation days and when they needed employees, you know, they came in and built employee housing and kind of put it all together where people could walk to work and they could be together in community. And I think, I think we need to think about that, is building little small cluster communities as, as, for example, as a possibility. The other thing is, I know this has come up, I don't have the answer, but a lot of discussion about housing on agricultural land. And, you know, what is allowed on ag land for housing? And what, what, what might that look like? So it supports ag, it doesn't take from ag, but it actually adds value because you may have a workforce there, right? You may have people working on the land, you know, living on the land, growing stuff on the land. And so is there any, like, is our regulation stopping this type of how, you know, stop, stop housing on ag? And I'd love to look at that. But all those things I'm talking about are ideas that, you know, you can talk and look at the regulation, but you have to work with the mayor. You have to work with the planning director because the planning director could stop and say, nope, don't support that idea. And so then, you know, and then they'll give their reasons why or whatever. But I think there's a lot of room for creativity and potential, but it's going to have to be worked through the, you know, getting the mayor and the, get the five votes, you know, get the mayor on board and get the planning director on board. It takes, you know, and that's, that's what I'm pretty good at, actually. Is knowing that you have to collaborate, build consensus, talk to people, see what's workable. You know, you have to, a lot of times you just have to be flexible and negotiate and see what works so that everybody feels comfortable with where you're headed.
Thank you. Christine?
So that's a good lead in to the question about community development plans. I would imagine you're I would imagine you're familiar with what those are and do you think those community development plans should be advisory? Or do you think they should take the, be like the force of law?
Probably both. And I, I'll tell you why, because, um. It's a wonderful process, it's, I think it's been really good for the community to have these plans because. It's unusual to have only one government through a whole island and where Waikoloa and Waimea and, you know, Havi and Kappa Al don't have. You know, they don't have a city manager or a mayor or a council for them, you know, so how, so, so how do you set priorities? This idea of the community development plans was fabulous because it helped the community. Talk to one another and decide what is our priority, um, I think that once the community. Identifies and gets down to some top priorities, I could see where that could be enforced in law. Uh, but the reality is if you say your priority is to have. A library, like what I've worked on in one community and that was part of their priority. The only force of law there is, is to keep. The elected officials and the mayor and everybody focused on getting the library, cause the library is such a hard process. I mean, it involves the Department of Education, it involves the Board of Education, involves. I mean, you talk all the different agencies and then you gotta get funding from the legislature, so as you're working to get a library, which we've been working on for. Fourteen years, as you work for fourteen years on trying to get your library, never taking your eye off that focus, getting the library. Other things come up. You know, Mahu Kona. You know, Mahu Kona and, you know, let's fix our parks, let's, you know, the pool, the. Things go down, let's fix the pool, you know, I mean, things happen while you're still doing things, so it's very fluid in a way, so that you have to. I think there's fluidness and that's why it's so wonderful to have the action committee to all the people that volunteer for the action committee. Thank you, thank you, because you're the voice, you keep the focus. You keep the conversation going, you keep your list on the board, you never, you, but you know, it's still fluid, you know, because it gets fluid because the process can be. So difficult that you gotta allow things that maybe were farther down the list to move up the list because maybe it's, it's reachable, you know. And then you have stuff going on that's outside of yourself, you know, that you can't, you can't plan on like the big earthquake that we had. Uh, you know, that, you know, and how, the other thing is our shelters, our emergency shelters and our emergency response, you know, people find. Uh, weaknesses, as time goes on, you find weaknesses and then the community says, we gotta fix the weakness because, you know, the community. Really needs to feel, you know, very safe and very secure, so I, I think, so to answer you, I think it's kind of both. But you have to realize how fluid it is, uh, cause you can't, so many things you can't control on that, you know, when you have the list. Stay focused on the list, but you can't control the time it's gonna take and all the other people that are gonna get involved to make it happen, you can't control that.
I think a lot of time, energy people put into that planning process. Has to do with the nature of their community, things that they would like to preserve, so I think it would. Work out more to be something like, for instance, you know, a large scale power plant. That burns eucalyptus trees is not what we would like for our community, so if the community comes out and says that. Then, you know, to the extent that that power plant was dependent on permits from the county or anything from the county. The county would say, well, that's not what the community wanted, so, um, it's not gonna happen. And, you know, I think that when we're talking about force of law, I think it's kind of more on that end of things where people are wanting to, you know. No incinerator or, uh, we would like this farms to be small scale, so I think that's more the question. You see the county in that instance, taking the stand that. This new development that's proposed or these new activities are not in alignment with the community development plan, so. Sorry, it's not gonna happen.
I, I hear where you're saying and I agree with that, but I want you to know the process. Because the process was so long at the beginning and I think. You know, I, I think it's really important for me to say this, at the very beginning, when the plant that you're talking about. Was in discussion, people were so focused on getting off fossil fuel and we want renewable energy. There was not enough chatter about what's the difference between clean energy, renewable energy. And dirty renewable energy and I think what's happened over time, which is a good thing, really, a good thing. People now are getting much more educated on what is a renewable energy that may be dirty and not acceptable to us. And a renewable energy that's clean and acceptable to us. Because the technology and the computers and all of us educating ourselves about what's really going on is really. Um, moving, is, we're moving on this as time goes on, you know, there. I mean, I'm kinda surprised people said they don't, I, I'm surprised people still want windmills. You know, I've seen enough literature over the last, last four or five years where it kills birds and bats and people don't like the noise, they think it's. Dangerous, the, you know, and then when, when the, when the windmills are, you know, what are you gonna do with them? When, you know, because they get outdated like every other technology, they're gonna get smaller and faster or whatever, and so what are you gonna do? You gotta make sure they decommission them and get them out and people don't like plight, you know, I mean, so windmills has not been that, that popular. You know, in the last four or five years, from my standpoint, I was hearing people complaining about windmills. But at the beginning, you, 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 you know, you could, they loved windmills. So, you know, I mean, I think as time goes on, we as a community get far more information. And we're more educated and, and that's great, I mean, it's a good thing. But we're, you know, it's gonna change, so I think the, the biggest thing that we have coming our way is. We're gonna be more knowledgeable, we're gonna get more information, we are, uh, uh. We're so conscious, you know, about sharing these things with each other and moving forward and that's what your mayor and council do. You know, they're change makers, you know, they're with the community, working to make the community better and you're right, the community voices about the plant. I think are pretty doggone loud and it'll be interesting to see how it eventually plays out because, you know, that's, uh. You know, that's at a different level right now and process and permitting and the PUC and the repeal and. It's kind of in the legal, kind of in the legal world right now, um. We'll see where that takes us, but you know, it's gonna, again, windmills, I don't know where windmills are gonna be five or ten years from now, if the community says no. No more windmill, I don't know.
Well, I think it's also an economic issue and, uh, in the case of Hu'onua, the ratepayers would actually end up paying more for the electricity that it. Produces and I think that, I, I think that has to be addressed as well. Um, in consideration of those economic issues, do you change your stance or do you just move forward? In other words, knowing that the ratepayers are gonna pay more for electricity and it may not be clean energy. What, what's the driver to move something like that forward?
You know, in an ideal world, I'd love to have microgrids and not have this huge grid that goes around the island and, you know, hear all the. Argument that, you know, we have to maintain an old system with those power poles and lines and. They have to go around and they have to be reliable, that's our reliable, no matter what happens, you know, that's our reliable source. So, you know, that, that's why the fossil fuel, coal and other things have hung around for many years because they say that's kind of your reliable. Energy if something happens to the sun or the solar or the wind, you know, that's like inner, you know, it, so, so. We've got batteries coming, you know, the ba- whole new battery world and hydrogen. So we're just now, we're gonna, we're mov- we're moving and, and things aren't gonna be the same. You know, six or ten years out, you know, we may have a hydrogen fuel economy on this island that's big, you know, we. You know, the solar battery, uh, you know, batteries, and the one thing that government could do. Uh, if the community would be supportive of this, is we just get all of, um, the government buildings and. All the government vehicles and everything off of fossil fuel and be leaders and show it can be done. Are we the ones that are gonna jump on and be the leaders and say, we're gonna show you it can be done, we're gonna do this? You know, so that's something that we'll have to talk about because obviously we're with inflation and the cost of living. Uh, and the burdens that people are feeling right now with, with the cost of food and, and fuel and housing, um. It's really hard to say we're gonna take on some new programs and gosh, we're gonna spend money to do it. You know, and, and, you know, we have to be careful about how we spend money right now because we can't, we don't know, um. If we're gonna have a recession, uh, uh, if we're, you know, this. Inflation, is it gonna keep going, uh, we just don't know right now, so it's a little, you know, it's kinda like. We got a lot of things to think about over the next couple of years, not knowing, there's some uncertainties out there that are gonna play into, I think, some of the decisions coming up.
Christine?
Um, okay, so. One of the core functions of county government is waste management. And I'd like to hear your ideas first, maybe an analysis of where Hoi County is at with waste management. And then, once you've just sort of given us that analysis of, you know, your overall. View of where things are at and where they're headed, any ideas you have to make improvements?
Well, waste management is, I think, one of the hot button issues, um, on this island that. If we keep putting it off and expecting the next administration to take care of it or to, let's wait two, four years and. Let's wait until it becomes where we can't stop, we can't turn our heads, you know, it. I mean, I'd like to take it on full bore that over the next two years is this issue of waste management, I. I called, um, Ed Case, our congressional delegation, Ed Case here a couple, I actually talked to him a couple of weeks ago and said, um. You know, many years ago, EPA used to have a program where they had a lot of money in a fund and. Communities could tap into it and they were zero interest loans over forty years. And so each homeowner would pay through their property tax assessment. For over forty years, a small amount of money to create a sewage treatment plant that was state of the art and took care of it. I said they used to do stuff like that, um, so why aren't we doing that again? And it would be really, really nice if we could get the legislature and the congressional delegation to find ways to put money into funds. That the county can tap into, but people pay it back. You know, it's zero interest loan, it gets paid back, but it's very affordable, very affordable, uh, when it's over forty years. Um, and it's spread out amongst all the people that, that use the, the treatment plant and of course, the. County can always do matching dollars and say, you know, the county will put in thirty percent and. You know, everybody else has to split at sixty percent amongst all of the users, but, you know, I think there's different ways possibly to do that model. But now I've seen recently that USDA through their rural grant program. Has money available for facilities like sewage treatment plants through the USDA Rural Grant Program. So the question that I would have going in as a councilman, uh, person, woman, would be, um. How are we tapping and using all of the rural money that's available in this county? You know, and how do we write grants, how do we, cause a lot of them are competitive and a lot of them are formula. Um, so I would like, you know, what are we doing to get our fair share and bringing it to the county, cause I think there's probably money there, I think. But I'd love to work on that and research that, um, and, uh. The other thing that's been really on my mind because of that cesspools along the coast. Is I talked to an environmental engineer and he was telling me, there's probably only two ways to deal with. The number of homes, um, is probably a sewage treatment plant, but there's the traditional sewage treatment plant. And then there's a thing called constructed wetlands, which the EPA, um, will give money to build. And create what's called constructed wetlands, which is another technique for, um, treating sewage, sewage. And he said that you should pursue that as a possibility, so I went online, Googled constructed. Treatment plants, low and behold, on Oahu, there is a firm. That has built these constructed, uh, wetland treatment plants and they've done it on Oahu. And so we even have somebody, so I guess what I'm hoping is that we. Reach out and talk to people that have done these sewage treatment plants on Oahu. Because Oahu has all those people and they have all those projects and they've all, ma- majority of them had, if they aren't connected to the city and. Ha- uh, county of Honolulu, which has got a big problem, cause of Sand Island, you know, is, uh, that's a mess over there, but. They also have it in Kapale and all these other places, they're building these sewage treatment plants, what is it that they're doing, state of the art, how are they affording it? I think we need to do more research and I, I can tell you, that's what I'll be doing. Because I know it's important to my community, Pu'ako, I've got to find some answers for them and help them find answers.
Okay, thank you, Cindy, uh, unfortunately, we're out of time, we really appreciate you taking the time to meet with us this evening. Uh, thank you, Christine, for conducting the interview. At, uh, Huli Pat, we're building something that the political establishment has never seen, a slate of pono leaders. Your donation can help Huli the system, please visit hulihi.com. For more information or to make a donation, that's hulihi, H U L I H I dot com, thanks again very much, Cindy.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you.